Okay, we're gonna open up the special selectmen meeting on Wednesday, March 2nd, 2016, at about 6:34, if we can all stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, I thank you all for coming out.
Sure.
I appreciate it. I think this is an important meeting for all of us. We can both work, understand what each side's trying to accomplish.
Sure.
And hopefully, we can move forward with some good team effort back and forth.
Good.
I know you had something on your agenda. We're waiting for one more of our selectmen to show here. Maybe you could brief us in on...
Yeah, maybe I could provide you with a little bit of an overview of, you know, where we are and what we're hoping to accomplish. So I distributed this sheet to everybody, and it's just gonna, I'm just gonna start at the top and work my way down with some information for you. So at the very top, you see a budget history. And what I'm trying to demonstrate here is, as you know, I came in, my first budget was 2014, so my first year here was in '13, and that budget had already been determined for me when I entered. And then, since then, I've been trying to work hard to preserve community resources for you. So I thought it'd be a little bit helpful to see what the history was before and after 2014. And so I asked Greg to put some figures together for me. And what was interesting is that all of my budget's increases only approximate that one year that you had before I got here. So the 7.67, if you add up all the others, I think it comes out just below that. So I've been trying to really minimize the impact that the district has had financially on the communities, and to respect how, you know, we use our resources collectively. But that doesn't mean that I have also minimized the development in our district. So while I've been trying to be conservative around how much money I ask for, I've also been pretty aggressive in the ways that I use that money to expand and to improve what we're doing. So I wanted to demonstrate to you in the next section about the ways that we're increasing value of the district for the communities. So again, while I'm trying to minimize the impact financially on the towns, I want to maximize the educational advancement that we have. So the way that I've been able to accomplish that primarily is through our zero-based budgeting effort. And all that really translates into is, every year, I start at ground zero, and I try to look at, how are we gonna funnel our, hey there, Dan? How are we gonna funnel our resources? I provided one for him.
Yeah, Dan, we're working off his sheet. He's explaining this.
That's fine, thank you. Sorry, I'm late.
So how am I, so I'll just go back just for a minute for Dan. So the very top, Dan, I just showed the budget history, and what I've asked for since I've been here, and what you were experiencing before 2014.
Correct.
And that I've been trying to minimize the impact our budget has on towns to really maximize our community resources collectively. So while minimizing the impact, minimizing the budget, I've also tried to maximize the advancement. So zero-based budget is really just about, how do I look at every year what my resources are? How do I focus them on my goals? So there are some things, hard choices, that we have to make, but we gotta look at our priorities. If you distribute the finances over everything, you never make a difference. So that's one of the big ways I've made a difference. Another way is in working with the different...
You mean by that, if you distribute it? I mean, you can't, you can't, it's not the same percentages to everything.
So if I have a dollar, if I have a dollar to use, and I don't have my priorities, I could distribute that dollar across 10 different things, and everybody gets a dime, which in the long run, may not make a difference. But if I focus in, I could give a higher percentage to something that would have a higher leverage point for us.
I got you.
Yeah. Another way is not really what I'm doing, but what our unions are doing at the school district. So we have five different unions that I work with, and we have worked very collaboratively with them to help manage the contracts and benefits that we have in the district. So what that translates into is, there used to be a salary adjustment every year for people where they could not only advance year by year, but by education advancements, they would also get an additional amount of salary. So that was very unwieldy. It would provide a high level of variability. You couldn't predict who was moving where, what the percentages were gonna be, but at the end of the day, it was always greater than the 2.5 percent. So knowing that I have, to be respectful of the 2.5 percent cap that you all have to abide by, if my budget keeps coming in above that, then it makes it hard on you. So if I have variables that I have to work with that are above that, it makes it hard on me, right, and you. So what we've done in our district is manage a cap for 2.5 percent per year. So salaries are a portion of my budget. It doesn't mean my budget goes up that much every year, but that portion of my budget is controlled now, and it's predictable. So it makes it much more manageable for me, which makes it easier for me to comply with what your requirements are.
And so the people watching this understand, when we came over, me, Ed, and Dan came over to your meeting, I questioned the 2.49. You explained to me, Bill, what happened is, they were on a roller coaster ride.
Yeah.
And what I've done is, I did a one-year 2.49 increase, so now we're straight lined. We have straight revenue, salary revenue increases, and we know where we're at, and that's what you're talking about with the unions.
That's right. So if there was a high variability...
Yep.
Can't predict it.
Right.
It's sort of like health insurance.
Yep.
Health insurance, every year comes at you, you don't really know what the percentage is gonna be, and you just have to eat that increase.
Right. And as you explained, and the unions all got together, I'm letting the people know this, the unions, the teachers' unions all got together, and they sat down, negotiated this with you guys, and that's why you arrived, that you arrived. So it wasn't like you guys were actually bullying them, it was all good with them. They actually got together and said, hey, we need help, the districts and what have you. And you guys worked it out, and it might look costly this year, but in the long run, it makes everything more flatlined.
But does that mean to say that every year going forward, we can expect a 2.49 percent automatic pay raise for all of the teachers? Is that, and if that's so, is that, is that the state of the Commonwealth, and that teachers get, to be competitive, we have to give 2.5 percent raises automatically?
So I think, I think from what I'm hearing, there's a little confusion. So we have a 2.49 percent increase in our budget, and built into that is a 2.5 percent raise for the teachers or for the staff members, right? So the 2.49 percent is my total budget increase this year, right? So that includes health benefits, that includes, what you'll hear here is, we had a...
The teachers get a, what, a three-year contract, or...
Three-year contract.
So that will be the same next year, too?
So it would be the same next year, but we renegotiate, right, with them every three years. So the reason that they, they did that, the reason that they tightened their belts, is that they realized, you can't afford that every year.
Right.
And it's not sustainable. So the unions, on their own, you know, with my help, decided that if we wanna really make this effort sustainable for the towns, we've gotta tighten our belts. We can't depend upon 6 percent raises, 8 percent raises, that's not realistic.
Right.
So they all backed down to 2.5 percent. Now, that's not in addition to percentage increase for the cost of living, that's all they get, 2.5 percent. There's no in addition to.
Right.
Right?
And does that include their health benefits tied into that? Is that part of the 2.5, or that's a separate line item? Because health insurance can spike up 8 percent a year.
Or 11, like we experienced, like last year, 11 percent increase, 10.8 percent increase. So that's another thing that they contributed to. We all went to the table, this is a negotiated item, and they said, this is not sustainable. What else can we do? And so the first year I was in the district, we retooled health insurance a little bit. We thought it'd make a difference. It didn't pan out that way. So then last, this past year, we all got together again, and they're going to the GIC. Now, last year, we had a 10.8 percent increase. The GIC is predicted to be more along the lines of 3.5 percent. So now, by them collaborating and cooperating, that'll be a savings for everybody. That's built into our budget this year. So without that, we'd have this, not only 4.9 percent, we'd have all of these extra things for salary and benefits coming your way. So one of the things I'm really proud about is the faculty coming to the table and saying, we're in this with the towns.
Right.
It's not sustainable. All we're doing is cutting programs and staffing every year to satisfy the few.
Right.
And so they really made a big adjustment.
So do you foresee that, the way you have it going forward, you know, you fairly know in the last few years, you know, so you slowly incrementally have brought about changes, but do you foresee that we'll have a, you know, a budget in the next few years that just stays within prop 2.5?
They always do.
Well, well, we're forced to, or we're forced to override, and that's reactionary, so, without laying off teachers, without...
Yep. So my budget every year is at or under the 2.5 percent. This is the highest year at 2.5, so I've come in as little as .54 for you. So I always am trying to do that the best I can. What you'll hear in a little bit is that there are sometimes some unexpected, unanticipated costs associated with some items, like the electric bill went up 37 percent for us for the regional campus, because we're aligned with the electric company in West Newbury.
National Grid.
National Grid.
I thought energy prices were down.
They went up 37 percent.
National Grid, that, right?
Yep. Or special education, that's something that we can't control, right?
Yep.
So there are some things we can't control, and occasionally, they're gonna come our way, like any school system. So we do our best to control those, and when we can't, then, you know, there's a, there's a cost associated with it.
In terms of what we can't control, you say special ed and utilities and things of that nature. I mean, the special ed, we talked about it down at the legislative breakfast, and you had mentioned that just in the fiscal year, the cost increased, I think it was $800,000 is that?
$818,000 since last year.
One year.
Yep. And what I explained at the legislative breakfast that we had, is that this is not a big increase in the number of students, it's a couple of students who have very severe needs, who may never come to a public school.
And, and I will say that in our last meeting, that I talked to the town here in the board, and I got criticized because, and I want everyone to understand, we're not picking on the special ed person.
No.
We're talking about the system, the way the system is set up.
That's right.
And I was saying, we have a school that's doing in there for six hours a day, getting 24-hour care that won't even come to our school. What I was saying, we gotta find another mechanism. Go to the state. We all get together with the school board, us go to the state, we all group together with another couple towns, we go into the state, and we say, hey, guys, we can't do this, we need help. It wasn't me picking on the special ed person.
No, not at all.
I think they need it. I was special ed, I mean, you know what I mean? And I'm all for that. I just think we gotta find a different tool to get where we get.
It's a serious funding issue that I wasn't aware of until you brought it up.
Yeah.
And we, you know, that legislative breakfast, hopefully, you know, Senator Bruce Tar and Rep. Alani Mara and the other reps within the district...
Yeah.
Will go to the House, but I think, you know, I mentioned it, I don't know if people agree with me or disagree with me, but I don't think a doctor bill should come with the education budget. I mean, it's, it needs to be more of an insurance model, where our state income taxes pay, you spread it out amongst a few million taxpayers. A little town of Groveland with 7,000 people can't predict, nor can we pay for these spikes and...
That's right.
And not only that, I think in terms of customer service to the parents that have children...
That's right.
Whether they're special needs or not, it creates, and I'm not saying, it creates kind of a battle for the budget.
That's right.
And, and that's unnecessary, because we all want the same thing, which is good education for our children.
That's right.
But where you have limited resources, it almost kind of backs you into a corner where somebody wants the services for special needs, and then you say, well, maybe we don't have the sources. So I think it's a legislative flaw that somehow, at some point in time, they tacked on to the education legislature and made it funded at the local level. I don't know if you agree with me on that or not, but...
Yeah, I think Bill brings up a really good point.
It's a structural flaw.
Yeah. Bill brings up a really good point. Everybody wants the appropriate service for every student. There's no question about that. But when you have a small population paying for that, and there's a huge expense, 400, 500, $800,000 sometimes, a small population of people would have a hard time paying for that. Whereas, if all of the most serious cases were taken by the state, that would now be less variability, so it wouldn't have such a high impact, and we'd have a higher level of service for everybody.
Right. Right. And not to interrupt you, but the day the legislatures came, I think they were there, and from what I took out of the meeting, I don't think they even knew how to fight this fight. I think they were before us, asking us for help. They were there, we need you guys to band together with other towns and come in and get back to us, let's have more meetings, but I think they know this is a, this is a budget buster for all of us.
Yeah.
And I think they know it's a big problem, and we need to get to the bottom of it. My question to you guys would be, has this been this way in the past? Has it, or has this just changed?
No, this is, this has been forever.
It's been for years and years and years.
This has been forever. So I've been an administrator since 1987. This has been a problem for the whole time that I've been an administrator.
Right.
And that's been across New Hampshire, Connecticut, and Massachusetts.
Wow.
So it's not unique.
Yep.
But when it comes up, it's a big stone in a little pond.
Yep.
Everybody gets excited about it, but because next year, it probably will even off, you won't experience it for a while. So everybody dies down again, it goes away because it's at somebody else's community next year.
Right.
Right.
And as they were saying that day we were there, that this governor is gonna really go for charter schools. So the way I come out of that meeting is, how much is he gonna really dump into charter schools and not the public school systems?
Yeah.
So that's what we gotta be careful of, too.
Well, you know, that's another critical point, is that I'm all for competition. I think that's fine, right? I think without competition, we get kind of lazy, and we, we just think, well, for instance, if I were a school without competition, I might think, well, those kids have to come to my school anyway.
Right.
You know, no hard feelings, this is how it's gonna be.
Right.
So that's our innovation school initiative, is that we're trying to become more competitive and offer things that are unique.
Right.
So I get all that. But when our schools are paying for the competition and its development, I get a little bit diffi, that's hard for me to swallow, because it's coming out of my budget, and I've gotta make ends meet, just like everybody.
Right.
Maybe we can let Dr. McQueen finish the presentation, then, that's good.
Yeah, so I can go through rather quickly here. You can see that I've tried to implement things like accelerated courses for kids, the, we have more in-district special education programming. We've really increased the level of stabilization in our district. So when I got here, we were using the excess and deficiency account every year to make ends meet. Now, this is the first year we're not using that, and we've actually built up a pot of money in our stabilization, so we're becoming healthier in that way. We're increasing sustainability. As I mentioned, I've renegotiated contracts. There's a cap on the contracts that teachers understand is the only way for us to be sustainable. We are moving to the GIC. I've reduced central office staffing, we're bare bones, I have Greg and a special education administrator with me. School administration is also reduced. I have one principal in Merrimack, as an example, shared among two buildings. It's not the way we want things, but if you have your priorities straight, you do some, you make hard choices, and then you build back. And my administrators, they, they went without raises for one year, because they knew, if we have our priorities, we've gotta make sure we all get through this together. So the organizational limits that I have are challenged by out-of-district placements, I have it down here, $818,000 since last year. The electric utility bill for the campus and for Page School, up 37 percent, you know, that's a big hit for us.
Did you have a dollar figure on that?
It's about $75,000 for the three buildings, for that, just the increase.
Just the increase. Yep. And we've had a decrease, as Bill was saying, we have a decrease in state aid of about $65,000. And where did that money go? It went out to help fund charter schools, you know? So we've absorbed all of that cost in that 4.9 percent increase.
Did all of that, was that reduction in state aid all because of charter schools, or was it, did it go to...
It's hard to say, Dan, exactly how they...
Is it income-based, and what, people in town made more money this year, and they shift, they redistribute wealth to other towns?
It's actually from the revenue sheet that they gave you. I'm sure you're familiar with the cherry sheet that they normally do. We have the same thing. We lost a little bit of money in transportation aid, we gained a little bit of money in chapter 78. The cost for choice out, less children leaving the district, so that actually was more money to us. But charter out was a big increase, and school choice reimbursement to us was a big decrease as well, because as we weaned ourselves off of school choice, as all the towns requested years ago, that we're now just taking kids within our own borders.
Where are the charter schools on that? Where are they?
The only one that really ties to us right now, I think, is River Valley Charter School in Newburyport.
Yeah.
Because you have to live in a town that touches the town that has the charter school to be eligible to attend it.
What is River Valley Elementary?
It's in Newburyport. It touches West Newbury.
Yeah.
Just touching on salaries, and you got renegotiated contracts, a limited annual salary increases to 2.5.
Yep.
It's very tough for us to come back here to the town people, town employees, and give them a percent and a half, a 2 percent raise, where they look and they say, well, everybody at the high school, the Penn ducket, got a 2.5 percent raise.
Right.
Was there any thought of, when they negotiate, to negotiate it, like, we're only giving out 1 to 2, to do the same thing at the school?
So what were you giving out, giving out before 2014? Any ideas there?
Two, two, two and a half.
Two forever, two, two and a half.
Two and a half forever.
And so in the contracts that I was dealing with, some teachers are getting 6, 7, 8...
And then they were getting increased because they paid a lot of bachelor's and masters and whatever.
The first 10 years, there was 7 percent per year for each step.
So when I, when I asked them to come back to 2.5 percent, that was a big hit, exactly right. So it's not that I'm insensitive to other town employees getting less than.
Right.
It's that if I had, if I said, we're gonna dial back to 1 percent, I'm not sure that I could get them to do that. And it takes them to agree to it in order for us to do it.
What other, what's our competition, though? I mean, they may say we're not gonna do it, but if they, if they can't do better elsewhere, I don't wanna drive teachers out of town, but what's the competition?
Is it, do teachers get 2.5 percent statewide? Is that an average? Is that below average, above average?
We get, I get a lot of calls from neighboring districts asking, actually to see the language in our contract that eliminated the stepping column provision.
Yeah.
Because we're the only ones that have done it. Most of them you're seeing right now are negotiating 1 to 2 percent, what they call cost of living increases.
Yeah, coal.
But that just changes the steps. They could still move one or two positions on that.
And they could jump 7, 8, or even higher percentages.
And I'd just like to touch a little bit, Mr. Watson said, we understand the 2.5. It's a little different, I mean, I know we have the smaller towns, because it's usually the same employees keep going. Ours, we may give a 2.5, but it nets out a lot lower than that, because in any given year, we'll probably retire anywhere from 10 to 15 people, making in the 80,000 range, and the district's always been committed to bringing new people in at the lower range, so that...
So it's 2 percent of a smaller number.
Yes.
That's right.
So it's not overall 2.5 percent increase in the salary, it's actually, overall, it's much smaller than that.
Right.
It's 2.5 percent of your total payroll, is that what you're saying there?
Does that make sense?
No, if you stay there from year to year, you'd get 2.5 percent, but I was saying, we'd net out.
2.5 percent of a $60,000 salary is lower than 2.5 percent of 85 or 90.
That's right.
Or you'd have someone making 80, you replace the making 50, save $30,000.
If you have, if you top heavy...
Right.
Well, if you have a lot of people with seniority that have been there 20 years, the payroll's a lot higher.
Exactly.
And, and as they rotate out through retirement, then you replace somebody with less than that salary, and so the 2.5 percent now is a lot lower.
Right. Yeah. One thing, can I, can I ask you to do?
Yeah.
I probably should've done it. Could you introduce everyone that you brought with you? Just sorry, Greg.
Yeah, so Doug Jelinez is over here, school committee, and Lisa O'Connor, school committee. I think you're all, you know, Jack Willett?
Yep.
Water department? No, I mean, school, school committee. Right? Greg LaBrec?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I think it's safe to call, call you town elder.
You know, not to get sidetracked, but one thing that I was saying, in, in how I look at it, in even running a business, running, what you're doing is a business, running this town's a business.
Yeah.
And what I've always said, you can take and you can strip something so much, where it's not gonna operate functionally right.
That's right.
And if you're gonna strip people of pay and then health insurance, whatever, are you gonna get those qualified people? So I just wanna let everyone understand that we're not here, I'm not here to do that. I'm here to try and find the biggest place we can go work on and try to, you know, keep our budget in line, keep our budget down, and what have you. And what I saw, just the thing I saw, was the special, the special ed. And again, I'm not picking on the special ed kids, it's just the expenses. If we could find a way to get someone else to absorb that expense, part of it, we'll take what we, you know, the school should take, and the town should take what we deserve to pay.
That's right.
But on the same token, we shouldn't be paying for something that we shouldn't be paying for. That's a big number right there.
So if you, you know those bottom numbers, the 818, the 37 percent, $65,000?
Yeah.
If you took those out of our budget, those are the variables that we don't have control over, take those out of our budget, we're down to about a .3 increase in our budget.
Right.
So...
Right.
Like, I don't know that I can do better for anybody with that.
Good. Can you, would you continue on the back and just explain the special education cost drivers?
You wanna help that?
Sure. That'd be great. I mean, it's, this is really helpful to see this.
It's really the four categories. The sped transportation increase, unfortunately, some of the newer people that are moving in, believe it or not, require, they, some of them are just day people, and they require transportation. What you usually try to do is combine as many people on a trip as you can, except that the schools that they're going to, where there'd be a single trip. It's $213 a day, roughly $40,000 a year, just to transport those three children. So that, that was 120,000 of the special ed transportation.
And that's not transporting into our schools.
That's not the ones that are residential, these are the ones that do...
Right. These are the ones that'll leave in the school and go into another facility.
Right.
Never mind the ones we have to pay for that are coming into our school.
Yeah.
The tuition for mass public schools, that's actually a decrease, and that, what that shows is that the programmatic stuff, that the programmatic improvements that are being made by the director of special education, who if you haven't met, you'd think is a wonderful guy, he's keeping more kids with our programs in, so they're not going to so they're not going to neighboring school districts. As a matter of fact, if you look at the budget presentation, I do seventy thousand dollars in miscellaneous revenue. What that basically is, is other schools paying us to educate their kids, Georgetown, Amesbury, sending kids to us, 'cause it's cheaper for us to do it, and our programs are equal to some of the out-of-district placements that they normally would have done. So we treat it as a revenue source and we have less kids we have to ship out. Then there's the private schools and the collaboratives. The private, private schools tend to be residential, for the most part. These are the expensive ones. Some children need over three hundred thousand dollars a year.
For one child?
For one child.
What, if anything, can you do to account for those costs? I mean, is, is it as simple as they send you a bill, or is there any sort of?
Sometimes you get a little lucky.
A cost report where there's, you know, a, a, a set amount per, per, what am I looking for here?
Reimbursement.
Service, you know, reimbursement, similar to like, you know, Medicaid's on a cost, you just don't get whatever you want for a booster shot. It's just, you get a set amount. So is there a schedule and there's a, a, a controlled costs on that? Or is it just effectively a blank check on, on, on what their needs are? How, how can you, who checks and balances that to say, okay, here's a bill for three hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's our special ed director.
Why isn't it two hundred? Why isn't it a hundred and fifty?
Because the programs have specialized components to them that are required for the student, and he's in charge of making sure that those requirements match the need, so that there's not extra things built in, and of course, that there's enough built in, you know, so he's, he's really responsible.
He has a guideline he has to work by.
Yeah.
It is a team of people, the teachers, they all try to.
Is there, is there any means, or is there any way to have Mass Health or another state agency defray some of the costs that are associated with a three hundred thousand dollar bill?
In some cases, yes. In some cases, we'll split costs with the Department of, I'm, I'm sorry, they don't call it mental rehabilitation anymore, but.
Right, mental health.
Right, sometimes they'll pay for the housing part of it and we'll pay for the education part of it, and that's some of the work that the special education director does to try to mitigate these costs by negotiating with state agencies to see if you can get them to pay some of it.
So they do scrutinize the cost and try to get available resources.
In every line of this budget, we scrutinize it. Yeah, he's in the office next to me, and I'll hear him groan, and I know he's gonna be coming in and we're gonna work something out.
Yeah, what do we do with this type of thing?
Yeah, but we do these things. We work together.
That eight hundred, eighteen thousand dollar increase, I understand is, you know, based on population and there's a two-part formula, there's an income part, I think.
Well, this, you mean the special ed?
Well, no, does Groveland pay thirty-eight percent of that? Is that a, a, a straight percentage?
Next year's budget?
Allocation in terms of the regional school district.
You'd be about thirty-nine percent, but I mean, there's a.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking you.
This number does make it into the budget, obviously, and it does become part of your assessment methodology, yeah.
Just wanna try to understand the math. So, i- if we're up eighteen hundred and eighteen thousand, Groveland's portion of that would be thirty-nine percent.
You could say that, if you wanted, for, for simple math, yeah.
Simple math, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, Ed Martin.
Just for clarification, when we met at the legislative breakfast, you mentioned that the last few years that you've been sending less students out of district.
Yeah.
Is, can you explain how many were aged out as, at twenty-two? And, and how many were, how many were brought back into the, into the district to further the education?
Well, our placements have gone from about forty-five to about thirty over the past couple of years. So, I, I don't have information with me to say how many aged out and where are they right now. I can tell you that every year, Mike Jarvis, he's our director of special education, is looking for, to bring back students and to develop our programming to take care of their needs in district, 'cause it's less expensive for everybody. So, he started a social-emotional program for elementary, middle, and high, and it continues over to the high school. And so last year, we brought in three students into the middle school who would have otherwise been outplaced. So that's an example of the work we do. I don't have the specific numbers, you know, right with me.
When you say aged out, why is it twenty-two? Is that the statutory requirement?
Yeah, so you would read in the, in the, in the law that students up to twenty-two, they go from twenty-one to twenty-two, have, were obligated to pay for their education, exactly.
Well, I know you guys are working hard at trying to keep the budget down, because you came in and gave us an assessment a few weeks ago, and the number looked kinda lousy, but I, I do wanna say thank you for coming back in with a ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollar decrease, which, that's gonna help us for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, it's something, I mean, but I definitely think we, we definitely should put our heads together and try and, like, these last three areas that we could work on.
Yeah.
The thirty-seven percent, or whatever, it's twenty-seven percent on the lights, on the light bill, they're thirty-seven. Is there any way we can work, I mean, is that just we have to pay it?
I was reviewing this, and there's a question, Greg could probably answer it. Is there any way that we could switch from West Newbury to West Newbury?
Actually, that question's been tried three or four times. It basically requires National Grid to be willing to give up the customer. And up until now, they have it. Mike Cludier has asked them a couple of times, yeah. We've tried it in the past.
I, I have. When we tied in, and we did the expansion through the light company to Mickle Village, the line was brought right down to West Newbury's line, okay, and we, at that time, had asked, why can't we switch over? Because we have Groveland Water, the middle school. So why can't we have Groveland Electricity?
I gotta believe there's a way to do it.
And.
We'll just have West Newbury deed the property over to Groveland, right?
Well, I can't see the National Grid dictating that we have to be their customer.
Figure it out. Beat the power company all day long.
How would you, how would you do that? How, how could we find out if they, if they dictate?
It's kinda like a Comcast contract. They have the town's borders, other borders that they service.
Okay.
They'd have to be, either they have to be willing to give it up, or I suppose you'd, like anything else, you'd have to find a way to change the law.
Right, right.
I, I would imagine, and Mike from the electric company might be able to shed some light on it, I would imagine we could go to the Department of Utilities in Boston and plead our case.
Yeah.
That, that we have the power in Groveland to give to them, and it would curtail a thirty-seven percent increase.
Yeah, we're getting salted.
For that middle school.
Thirty-seven percent. That would fuel cost it down half of what they would.
Yeah, they gouge you, you know. So let's put pressure on them, you know, a little publicity that doesn't look so good for them, we'll get it done.
Keep in mind, this, this increase didn't happen this year. It happened the prior year, but we had already gone out to bid, so we were locked in at the lower rate through last year.
Right.
So when it came up to this year, of course, we went out to bid again, and there's not much you can really do, because National Grid owns the poles. It's not like Groveland where they, Groveland owns the poles and the wires and things.
So when you go out to bid, it's not like you can go out to bid with three companies and get the best, it's not that kind of such a bid?
No, it's basically for just power generation, the transmission cost is gonna be owned by National Grid straight up, 'cause they own all the poles and wires.
Any, any thought to some school districts, some schools have done is put some solar panels up?
Actually, I mean, it's one of the things we talk about all the time. Obviously, we don't have the ground space to put them down. It's very tight for all the athletic fields as they are now, so the thought would be the roof. Obviously, we're not doing anything with the high school, because the high school's under MSBA review, and we just finished the middle school roof new last year. I contacted a few companies and not one of them was really willing to put it on the roof without, quite say, drilling holes through all of it. They didn't want to have a free-standing system there, 'cause the wind and flat roofs and a thousand holes usually don't go well together.
Right.
But we did look at it, yes.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question and then I, I'll make a statement. My question is, the excess and deficiency, when we disconnected from state oversight, I saw that number, you know, become volatile. And the lowest level that I'm aware of was two hundred thousand, and now remarkably, you guys are bringing it up to six seventy-six. Do you have a target for that, Ian Dean?
That was, actually, that was saved up over a couple of years.
Oh, great.
And the target of it was, we're keeping it aside because of the MSBA project. This is the money being put into stabilization, because you never know when the MSBA is going to pull the trigger.
Right.
And it's fully the intention of the district to pay for the feasibility study for the high school without coming back to the towns for more money. It's like, we knew this was coming, so we're trying to squirrel money away.
You're actually doing something we haven't done yet. You're saving money. God bless you.
Well, it's not saving. It's more like, if you know, if you know something's coming.
Set it aside.
As best you can, because, they said, you know, we know we're coming to the towns for assessments, we know there's other school districts, but the high school is an important project going forward, so it'd be remiss of us not to plan for it.
And, 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 not trying to be a jerk, but in, in the planning, you're not taking too much money and scrolling away to, you know, to make us pay for it, make, you know, we're paying a higher end. When I say we, you're squirreling money away for that project, it's not hurting the towns by not getting enough.
Oh, no, it doesn't affect your assessment at all. It's, it's prior money that would be just transferred in now.
Okay, alright.
It's basically because the towns have to authorize us to move it into stabilization.
Okay.
The DOR and the DESE, which never quite agree on anything, so the best way to probably do it is just to throw it as a line item in the budget, so when the towns do the budget, it approves the transfer.
Okay.
So, I'll take Dr. McQueen's presentation and work backwards a little bit, just so that people at home understand kind of the helicopter view. So the special education costs are really fascinating, 'cause they went from three million, I'm using rough numbers, to three point eight. And three point eight is ten percent of your thirty-eight million dollar budget.
Oops, yeah.
So that metric is not out of line with the realities of all my experiences that I've ever seen a school budget. So there's increases, tuition for collaboratives that we pay. We pay tuition for collaboratives, tuition for private schools, tuition for mass public schools, and transportation. So all of those went up, a couple of them, except for one. But one of the biggest increases happened to be the tuition for private schools. So I just, I mention this, 'cause we see it, 'cause we have a piece of paper in front of us, but people at home might not understand what's going on.
Yeah.
So going back and, backwards into your presentation, the eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for special education is a twenty percent increase. That's a.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven percent is a significant driver of the current budget.
That's right.
Your current budget is two point four nine percent. That includes that.
That's right.
Those, that driver, plus the other significant driver, and that is the thirty-seven percent increase in the electric utility, plus we got whacked with a sixty-five thousand dollars less from the state in aid. I get that. So if we, if we didn't have those drivers, plus the loss of the aid, your budget this year would have been point three eight.
Over last year.
Over last. So, when we hired you, and I'm proud to be on that team.
Yeah.
One of the things you promised us is something you fulfilled. You would never come back to us for operating money.
That's right.
In twenty fourteen, you asked us for one point eight eight more.
Yep.
In twenty fifteen, point five four more. In twenty sixteen, two point three four more.
Yeah.
And this year, two point four nine, of which it would have been point three eight if it wasn't for the, the drivers that are completely out of our control. We can debate all day long, going back to the legislators and asking them to take a look, like Dan said, Bill, and Ed, how can we get the state of Massachusetts to more equitably fulfill, help us fulfill our public duty and moral obligation to help all children, including those with special education needs.
That's right.
But we're not gonna answer that anytime soon.
For this fiscal year, no.
Certainly not this fiscal year. So, the other thing that's really remarkable is that your budgets have, have been constructed recently on two point five percent salary increases, 'cause I remember when I was on the school committee, those numbers were, were volatile also. So that's a wonderful accomplishment from the administration, from you, and also all of the collective bargaining units, not strictly just the teachers.
That's right. All, all of our employees have really tightened their belts to accomplish this, so you, it can look like a lot, but two point five percent increase compared to what it was is a big difference.
Big difference. So, this is not our budget, as you know. This, the budget is, you know, the ownership of the budget at the moment is the, is the finance, you know, ultimately.
Yeah.
But I probably will be supportive of this budget. I don't wanna reveal my vote, but it won't be any secret if I am. Because what are the consequences? If we don't support this budget, and by the way, how, how do we support it? We have to do an override?
That would be up to.
Potentially, right? But if, we'll talk about that later, but if we don't support the budget, my understanding is that we would have to cut one teacher out of every grade in all the elementary schools, I think.
It kinda depends on.
Potentially.
How much you fund without an override.
Okay.
If both you and Merrimack did everything on an override and we both failed.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'd have to come up with eight hundred something thousand dollars.
So that's a potential.
It would be in personnel, obviously.
Reaction.
Yes.
Okay, and that would impact a, a lot of people. That would, I think our, our class sizes would go, would start heading towards thirty again and
Well.
High twenties and all kinds of things.
They would be more than heading.
Yeah, they're gonna get there. So, so, yeah, I mean, I congratulate you. You've done a great job. You've fulfilled your mandate.
Thank you.
I congratulate, I'm, I'm so thrilled that the collective bargaining units have done things that I was not able to experience fully when I was on the board.
Yeah.
And, and we have a moral duty and a legal obligation to support all of our children. And under the circumstances, it is unfortunate, but that's where we're at.
Yeah.
One thing that, when you sit on this side and you hear from the town people, you know, the school budget's sixty-three percent of our budget, et cetera, et cetera. You know, they send these numbers over to us and they expect us to have to eat these numbers, you know what I mean, the, the override or whatever. What I'm trying to do is trying to show the people that, what the breakdown is and what, what it's all about. Like Joe just kinda did an overlay again of it, but, you know, it's not you guys, the bad guys. We're not the bad guys. We're trying to work this thing out.
That's right.
So, coming out of this meeting that I can see, if we could work on those three areas somehow, and as you just stated, it's not gonna be this fiscal year, but just because it's not gonna be this fiscal year, we shouldn't throw it aside.
That's right, exactly.
We should get the school board together with us, Merrimack get together with us.
That's right.
And we really should put a coalition together and press forward and try and work on this. That's my opinion of it, and that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
So, in terms of, if anybody can answer just generically now, the override, what would that look like? You said Merrimack and Groveland need to get together.
I mean, I've handed out the assessment letters. I know what your increases over the last, how you handle it, obviously, to town.
So what are our, what's, what would some of the scenarios be? What would the scenario look like?
Well, I mean, it still depends, 'cause we haven't gotten the budget process to figure out what you're recommending or what finance is recommending. As it stands right now, with all the requests, we're at a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar deficit. That does not include any capital projects at all.
Right.
And the capital projects are what, a couple hundred thousand?
It was originally two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, but the fire chief gave us a lower number, so about two hundred thousand is capital requests.
Right.
So two hundred plus, so about three hundred and change.
Three hundred and thirty-four thousand.
And not that we should be talking about it now, but I have just a quick question. What was that DORA number that we were gonna get back? Remember, we talked about money coming back with the DORA? There was some money coming back.
We're getting money from FEMA, from the lizard.
Nope, nope, there was another thing I thought.
Oh, you're talking about the DOR, free cash?
DOR.
They haven't certified it yet. It should be any day this week.
This is good. So, that that could be helpful?
Could be.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have no further questions, and thank you. Well done.
In terms of the budget?
No, these guys.
I wanted to, we're actually about the report card.
That's right.
We sat down and I, you know, if you wanna reiterate some of the things that we spoke about.
Yeah.
But I meant you wanna, wanna, what was it, a Monday morning or something?
Yeah.
And you broke up the numbers and clarified some things there, but.
And was there anything there that you thought was kind of enlightening that, like, I could talk about it?
What I found was enlightening is, I, I, and I didn't know it, and, and again, you know, I don't know it. There's probably more than a few people out there watching that don't know it as well. But, you know, I looked at the report card and I said, okay, compare the Bagnell School's numbers at, what's it here?
About forty percent proficient.
Right, forty percent proficiency in math.
Yeah.
And then I say, okay, you know, you look at the page, and they're at sixty-one.
Yeah.
Donahue's at forty-four. And then the other thing, the overall statewide comparison, we're at fifty-one percent. And the page was at eighty-four percent. So I posed a question to you is, why the disparity in, in ranking between the Page and the Bagnell and the Donahue? Is it, is it, what is it? What are the variables? Is it, you know, they're better teachers, the, the kids are brighter, you know, I mean, where, where's the, where does the answer lie in the, in the, the performance? 'Cause these are standardized tests.
Yeah.
And I don't understand it, but, you know, you've heard me say it, and I don't, I don't wanna.
It's so.
Be too negative, but is it fair for me to say we're at forty percentile and that doesn't look like a good report card to me?
That's right.
So I'll be tactful with that.
Alright, so Dan and I talked through it, and one of the numbers on the report card that is a little bit obscure is, what's the percentage of high needs at each school? And so, there's a disparity there. I think it's twenty-one percent high needs at Page, thirty-three percent at Bagnell, thirty-one and a half percent at Donahue. So when you take that factor out, what happens is, the numbers then are recalibrated, and what you end up with is about sixty percent for everybody. So, when you balance for the level of high needs, and high needs is special education, free and reduced lunch, second language learners, there's a whole bunch of different levels of need that are represented there. So you can think about the high needs category as sort of an extra burden that the school has to lift up in their numbers. And when you take that factor out, we were, I did it for Dan, I did the math.
They're all in the mid-sixties.
They're all in the mid-sixties. So, it shows you that it's just a level, it's just a, a way of, of leveling the playing field to see where are the, where's the real deal here. So, it's not a matter of, we've got bright kids and you don't, or we've got great teachers and you don't. It's just a matter of looking at, when you level the playing field, what are the numbers? And they're all in the mid-sixties. Now, I'm not happy with them being in the mid-sixties, but it's sort of predictable that when we shift to park, which is a, a more demanding application of skills, we, I already said, like, two years ago, we're gonna see a dip. So we saw a dip, and now we've gotta reconstitute, you know, our practices and, and get back on board. But it's not a matter of one school doing better than another. So that's where we ended up, I think.
So there really isn't any difference in teaching approach to say math at, at the Page School compared to?
There's not a silver bullet, that, you know, nobody's hiding a silver bullet here.
So it's not that the Page School has dedicated math teachers and the Bagnell doesn't?
That's right, exactly.
'Cause if that were the case, I'd say, well, why don't we have them?
That's right.
Right?
Exactly right. It would make sense.
What do they have that we don't?
What do they have that we, we want?
You know.
So when I, when I took the difference out and we leveled the playing field, we were all in the mid-sixties, and they've got work to do just like we do. So if you, if you look at that high needs population and, and take it out, it all works out pretty easily.
Is there any reason why we have a certain percentage of higher needs students? Is it just the?
Well, part of it's just where people live.
Just the demographics of our town.
The demographics plays out. You know, another part is where is, where is our programming located, and that could be shifting over time, too. You know, so it's a, a bunch of factors, but the bottom line. But, the bottom line is, everybody is doing about the same, and, and we're continuing to improve.
And we touched upon it. You've heard me over, not just this year, long, long before I was elected to this job.
Dan and I know each other from way back.
Yeah.
My condolences to you.
I've been chiming in on how to teach math at school since you moved.
He's a great advisor.
Since you moved, yeah, I give you two cents with you.
There you go.
But, 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 no, one comment, and I'll stop. But, but, you mentioned that, because sixty-four, you don't want to rest on that.
No.
And you, you had mentioned to me that next year, there would be some accelerated math.
Yeah, sure, I can...
There are going to be some changes in, in teaching math.
Yeah, in all schools. So, well, you know, one of the things, one of the practices, not just here, but in a lot of schools, is that if you have music lessons, like for violin, or for, you know, clarinet, you're pulled out of classes to get those lessons. So, you're pulled out of math, as an example. That's not good. So, what we're doing in this upcoming year is we're making a period across where lessons can occur, but also enrichment for math can occur, or enrichment for science can occur. So, kids are going to have a dedicated period where they can get their lessons and enrichment, rather than being pulled out of math class to, to get their violin lesson, which I think will be a help.
I got a question for Greg.
Yes, Doctor.
A few years ago, they stopped taking care of the outdoor maintenance over Merrimack. One way, it probably doesn't make sense here, but hypothetical. If we were to do the maintenance at the Bagnell School, plowing, mowing, what have you, would that save us a big number?
Well, basically, I would, I would just pay you. What we do is I pay Merrimack...
Right.
For the DPW to do that.
Yep.
Now, I wasn't the one that made that call. At the time, it was the gentleman prior to me.
Yep.
And he offered it to all the towns.
Yeah.
So, the first obligation, obviously, is to go to the DPW head and say, this is what they're willing to pay you to mow that lawn and plow that lot.
Right.
However, and this was always the key thing, schools need to be open.
Right.
So, if schools open that day, you need to get that lot cleared.
Right.
And at the time, both West Newbury and Groveland thought that maybe taking care of the roads was a better use of their time, as opposed to doing the lot. So, we continued to do the lots in those two towns. Merrimack wanted to do that, so we pay them, and we don't go mow the lawn or plow snow over there.
Right, no, Mike, one thing I'm looking at, set the DPW aside, money-wise, is it a big number, do you think? Is it a big...
I'll tell you what, we pay them. We pay them eighteen thousand per school, per year.
So, would...
We pay Merrimack thirty-six thousand.
You have to sit down and figure out what Groveland is...
Yeah, well, I mean, it'd be about the same as Donahue or Sweet's. I mean, we'd probably say eighteen thousand. That seemed to be the going rate.
For plowing and mowing?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just thinking...
It says, I mean...
You know, it...
Let's put it this way. This year here, Merrimack loves us. Last year, they wanted out. You never know what you're going to get.
Right.
In New England, but...
I think Ed wanted to talk.
Just, on the report card from the Bagnell School, can, can you explain the science portion? In two thousand and twelve, thirty-seven, two thousand and thirteen, seventy-three, and then a, a steady decline?
Yeah, I think we...
What happened in two thousand and thirteen that went way up?
Well, I think a couple of things. One is, we've had a lot of staff turnover. So, we, you know, we don't have the consistency sometimes in, in teaching teams. And when you have to make adjustments based upon seniority, it doesn't always work out. So, I think that may have been some of what contributed to it. One of the things that we're doing now, though, is implementing our design and engineering programming at Bagnell and at Page, as an example. So, we, Brendan Keenan, the principal, just got a, a big grant from a company to come in and help us with the, this new engineering STEM room that he's got. So, I think what you're going to see with what I was describing to Dan with this enrichment period is a lot more focus on science, math, and the core content areas. So, I'm hoping to bring that back up to where it should be.
The innovation schools, where we can channel some particularly bright children to areas academic. Tell me a little bit about that. Tell us a little bit about that. And, I noticed that the grant of two hundred and fifteen thousand, I, I don't believe that that, it's recurring, and...
No.
Nor do we need it because, to some degree, because a lot of the teachers that are already hired are embedded in the innovation schools?
Yeah, so, the innovation schools aren't just for gifted and talented. They're for everybody.
Okay.
We have some accelerated programming, though, that I think, for example, in math, that we're trying to push down into the elementary school, so it, it starts in middle school. So, you can take accelerated math and get early high school credit while you're still in middle school. And then that brings you into an accelerated track in high school. So, this year, for instance, we have the BC Calculus class, which is the first year of college calculus, being taught at, right onsite in our high school. We've not had that before. We never had kids that were ready for it, and so now we, we are. So, I think, you know, to, to Ed's point, our programming is starting to evolve in a way that will help bring us, you know, accelerate our student performance. It was pretty hit or miss before, and when you have a staffing readjustment, it really tends to blow things up.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else, anything else?
Well done.
Well, I thank you all for coming in.
All right, I appreciate it. Thanks.
I would like to, like I say, moving forward, if we can take those three areas, either the school board, us, all of us, come up with something?
Definitely.
Keep working on those three areas.
Sure.
And be proactive to try and get something done with it. I think it'd be, make sense.
Just, just a couple of questions on, on the budget item before you... Just, just a couple of things that, that stood out to me here. If you got the paperwork in front of you. You got line forty-nine, salary school principal requesting one hundred and ten thousand, nine fifty-four, a four point five nine increase. Is that, is that for one position or two?
That's a secretary.
Yeah, secretary, school principal's secretary. Hundred and ten thousand dollars for a secretary?
That's three.
Is that...
That's three people.
Three people, okay. All right, just says, just said one. And, special education secretary, a three point two six percent increase?
You have a, you have a line number on that?
Oh, yeah, thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Kind of think Joanna, this worked out well.
Same page.
The three point two six?
Yeah.
That's just a different, a slide where we had a part-time person that used to be office help. Well, now she's sliding a little bit of her, we call them broken crayons. They're like a point two in some place, or a point four. They don't stay in one place. Well, because of all the special, increased special ed costs, we're sliding some of it into there so she can help out with the secretary with that, a lot of the paperwork that's going with that. It's not another person or anything like that, or no one's getting more than a two and a half percent raise. It's just where we're, we're hosting them this particular next year. You'll see that a lot through the budget as people move around in it from year to year. As a program may move, it may look like we're losing sped paraprofessionals at a school, or teachers at a school, and they're really just sliding into different things depending on where programs will go. Or, we, we have retirements coming up that aren't being replaced by outside help because of the dropping enrollment numbers, but they'll be sliding teachers. We just don't know who they're going to be yet.
One other one?
Yes.
If you don't mind?
I know.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven.
How many is that? It's a...
Salary music teacher?
Salary music teacher, a teacher's high school. Thirty-six, thirty-five point six percent. Obviously, an increase in personnel there.
Five, five point two teachers. And, part of that is, there is no, we, we used to charge thirty thousand dollars a year to a music revolving account. The district used to charge people for music lessons. They're not allowed to do that. So, we had to drop that as a revenue source. So, now, children at the elementary levels, although they'll be bringing their own instruments, won't be paying that anymore.
It was two hundred, then it went to a hundred.
Yeah, we cut it in half, and then we...
It's supposed to be zero.
And it's going to be now, next year.
Zero now.
When I took Trump, I never...
That's right.
Any more, Ed?
I'm the chairman of the subcommittee on the budget. I have been on Greg's back, and at the central office, every single day, and what about this?